Great day, everybody.
Great day.
If you don't mind, I'll come down. I think me being in Progressive makes me want to walk a little bit. And those of you who go to Progressive, I think y'all know what I'm talking about. Yeah. So let me first of all thank the pastor for opening up his doors. Pastor Sutton, thank you so much if y'all will help me celebrate Pastor Sutton. It's our pleasure tonight to talk to you about a budget process. And I want to first of all celebrate you all. This is probably the most engaged that I've ever seen the public be in this process. We have had, I know that in Ward Sitz, there was a forum on last week that was held by Councilman Hendrix. Councilman Hendrix is here, Vice President of the Council. If you help me celebrate him and his presence tonight. And then tonight, you all are here to show your continued interest in what's going on in the Bold New City. And I think that a lot of the fact that you all have interest and know what's going on is because of a process that we've been using that opens up government to you a lot more than you've been able to see government open up. And so I want to congratulate all of the department heads and those folks who have made it possible. Everybody from charity on the third floor who takes phone calls and makes folks mad when she doesn't schedule them for a meeting as fast as they want to schedule, all the way down to the folks who are on the ground, who were in the neighborhood on yesterday knocking on doors, making sure that the community was aware that we would be here at Progressive tonight to have this meeting. So a few weeks ago, we had a time where we spoke to y'all through the State of the City address. In that State of the City address, we said very pointedly, without pulling any punches, that this would be a very tough budget season. We said that on the heels of actually having said it a year ago. A year ago, we said that we would be entering into a season where the way that we spent money, the way that we budgeted would be totally different than we've ever done before because we would be entering into a time where money would not be as available as it has been. So let's just take a real quick trip backwards so that you can understand how we've gotten here. Contrary to popular belief, we did not wake up with a $15 million deficit. That didn't happen overnight. You don't just wake up and have a $15 million deficit. That happens over time and it happens through practices in your finances that doesn't yield the kind of results that you should have yielded when it comes to the best practices in budgeting. So let me give it to you this way. My mom is on a fixed income. So she has a certain amount of money that she makes a month. So we'll just say my momma makes $800 a month. My momma makes $800 a month. So that means if she starts her budgeting, understanding that if she goes over $800, what's gonna happen? She's gonna be out of money. Alright? So because she has an understanding of that, she can't create her monthly budget at $900. Well, the city in the past has been creating their budget at $900, knowing that they were only gonna have $800 coming in. I know y'all looking at me like, "That is crazy." Well, what happens? Am I right or wrong? Okay, that's the finance lady and she's saying that I'm right and she's been around. That's the way we've been budgeting. What ends up happening is as the year goes on, we recognize that we don't have the amount of money or the revenue that has come in in order to meet this $900 budget. Because we don't, we then have to start looking at ways to cut back on our spending. In the meantime, we have filled that gap with what we call a fund balance, which means that the fund balance is the money that after the budget has been completed for the previous year, the money that's left over is called the fund balance. It's what we put in a little basket and we keep it there for a rainy day. We take the $100 out to fill in the gap between the $800 and the $900. Where over time, if you keep pulling the money out that way, eventually you get to a place where you don't have as much in it as you need. So we've said that we've got to change that budget practice. And we decided that we would start that change this year. Another thing that's important to understand is that we've started telling the truth about our budget. Not that we've been not telling the truth in the past, but we've been telling you all the truth during this budget. We've been uncovering the things that have been covered up and that you have not really been aware of as it relates to what the city's doing with your money and how the city is using that money. As a result of that, it's almost like this. If we had not pulled the covers off, you would not have known just how dirty things were. If you don't know how dirty things are, then you don't really know where to start cleaning up. So we've lifted the covers, we've invited you to look, and we wanted you to look so that you would understand the kinds of work that we've been trying to put in and that you would understand why we have been going through some of the things we've been going through. So we talked to our directors. We said to every director, "Every director, raise your hand." We told every director, "Director, go and look at your budget. We need you to look at your budget and we need you to make a determination on what you need." We made them determine the difference and to define the difference between what they need and what they want. We said, "When you do that," Dr. Murray, we asked them to look specifically at the 2014 budget. Use the 2014 budget as your cap. Don't go above what 2014 said was available for you and we're gonna use those same numbers for 2016. So in other words, if you had a budget in 2014 of $800, we know you asked us for $1,500, but you won't get $1,500. You have to start at $1,800 and then you gotta prioritize. The problem when you start talking about prioritizing is that there are certain things that some people in the finance world call sacred cows. The sacred cows no longer get preference anymore. And sometimes sacred cows even mean favorite people. Sometimes sacred cows mean favorite programs. And the problem with prioritizing means now you start to having to address things based on the need versus based on the want. So we went through this process of priority budgeting. Every director rated, ranked all of their programs, made a determination on what was necessary in order to keep services at the right level and to make sure that the city was not gonna be in peril at the end of two to three years and that we won't be in a situation where we are bankrupt. Well, we made a presentation of a budget. And in that budget, it included several different strategies in order to meet a goal. And the goal was to have a balanced budget that kept the city out of trouble. As a part of that balanced budget, there was a recommendation in there to the council for a tax increase. As a part of that balanced budget, there was a recommendation for a furlough. As a part of that balanced budget, there was a recommendation that we restructure the debt. As a part of that balanced budget, there was a recommendation to raise certain fees that have not been raised in some cases 10, 15 years. There was a recommendation in certain cases where we would freeze positions and that those positions would not be filled based upon the recommendations that came from departments on what they could or could not do. As a part of those recommendations, some of those strategies also included whether or not we would continue certain services and certain services that we would do without. We made that presentation to the city council and I want to applaud the city council for helping to make this process, probably one of the better processes that we have seen as it relates to ensuring that every possible thing that could be done to make sure that this budget and this budget process is a clean one and that it represents a budget that we all can know that as we go forward, we have the best possible opportunity of ensuring that the fiscal health of the city is intact. With that being said, we made the presentation. The council then looked at the presentation. On, I believe, a few weeks ago, the council then made some recommendations to the budget. They did so. And when they did make their recommendation, their recommendation included both short-term and long-term recommendations. The initial recommendation included additional cuts in several areas. One of the areas included police, fire, the zoo. It included constituent services. It included almost every department that they could go through. It also included use of, I guess, a reserve that we put up to pay what could be a bill that the city may face in the next couple of months. So what we were doing was trying to put that money aside just in case we are held liable for a bill that we have through the Jackson Redevelopment Authority. So the council recommended that we use a large part of those funds to help to balance the budget. And so what we did was took in all of those recommendations. We took those recommendations, looked at what would be the best possible way to ensure that we didn't have to do a bunch of layoffs, to ensure that we did not risk the quality of services, to ensure that we did not risk the police department having to sacrifice their 15% reduction in crime and major crimes, that the fire department didn't have to risk losing their fire rating by not being able to have the appropriate amount and rank of folks on trucks that it takes in order for us to keep and maintain the highest fire rating in the state so that your insurance isn't as high in that regard. Well, through that work, through the collaboration with the council, we're really excited to say that when we present the second draft of our budget, that it will not include a tax increase. Now, let me just talk quickly about the tax increase that we proposed. The tax increase we proposed was a tax increase and we did it. And I'm gonna tell you the only reason why I was comfortable with making the proposal. I was comfortable with making the proposal because you all already paid the same tax increase a year ago that I asked you to do again. In 2014, you all paid a $5 million, 8% tax increase. That was during the same year that you also paid over a 100% increase in your sewer bill. Y'all remember that? You also paid over 30% increase in your water bill. Y'all remember that? So in one budget year, in 2014, y'all paid a 5% increase, 8%, a $5 million increase or an 8% increase. You also paid higher water. You also paid higher sewer. And because y'all didn't complain about it, I thought y'all would be alright with doing it again. Especially since I reduced it for you last year and gave you $5 million back. So in the 2014 budget, you paid higher taxes. The same ones that we thought that we would ask you to pay this time that did not include a water rate increase or sewer increase. So I just figured that because nobody complained about it, that it would be alright, especially in a time where we needed to really balance this budget. So you all said, "Nope." And we said, "Alright, they ain't going for it." And a responsible leadership is leadership that listens to what the people say. So there will not be a tax increase that will be proposed as a part of this budget. The other issue had to do with the zoo. We worked extremely hard to keep this zoo in West Jackson. Real hard. Some of y'all remember that fight. You remember that there was a proposal that came from somewhere and from somebody. Nobody wants to take credit for that one. But they wanted to move the zoo from Capitol over R-55. Do y'all remember that? Well, we had budgeted for $1.2 million. There was a proposal and the zoo, they're here today. And I think, Councilman, we got some good news for the zoo as well. There was an initial proposal that said that we were gonna take the zoo's appropriation down to $600,000, which would in turn probably threaten the zoo's ability to maintain its accreditation, which would ultimately mean if they lost their accreditation, it would make it easier for folks to say, "Move the zoo." And nine times out of 10, your zoo would have been moved. And so we fought hard. The council worked hard. The zoo got engaged. The zoo board got engaged. And so now, we believe that we'll be able to propose a budget that the zoo will be happy with with a dollar amount that'll also satisfy their financial responsibility with AZA. And we are gonna be announcing in this new draft a budget that we believe will help to protect the zoo. Also, zoo, y'all can clap. We had concerns again about several things. Well, let me tell you what we've done. Today, the council had another round of deliberations. We sat in the room with the council, had great conversation about how do we finally reconcile where we are. Contrary to popular belief, what you've seen played out in the media is what government ought to do for you all the time. It ought to play, it ought to show you play-by-play how people are using and planning your money. And if that isn't happening, then you are not getting a real, true display of what real participatory democracy and participatory budgeting looks like. So don't believe the hype. Councilman Hendrix and I aren't fighting. Councilman Hendrix wants to get to a number and I want to get to a number. I just think my way better than his. He thinks his way better than mine. But what we've come to the conclusion of is that we both, along on our side of the street, along with the council's side of the street, we think that we've come around to focus around a few central principles that at the end of the day, these principles keep the politics out of what we're doing and it keeps us in a situation that presents you a balanced budget that all of y'all can be proud of. The directors might be mad about it because they ain't gonna get to buy vehicles for a few years. I told one lady, "We ain't gonna get to buy vehicles." And she said, "Good, cuz y'all have more vehicles than a little bit and ain't nobody doing nothing." And I said, "Alright, ma'am, let me go on back over here and cut some grass." But long story short, we're proud of the fact that we have grinded it out and that we have been able to come to a place where we will be able to present a budget next week, a final draft, to the council. And prayerfully, they will give the stamp of approval before the clock runs out. The administration has a statutory responsibility to present a balanced budget. That means that the state of Mississippi says that we have to present to this council a balanced budget. The council has a statutory responsibility to adopt a balanced budget by September 15th at 11:59 PM. It's our intention to fulfill our statutory responsibility. The council will fulfill their statutory responsibility and the world will be a better place. And by the time the fair come, y'all will forget we even had this forum. So at this time, we will entertain any questions. I'm gonna forego giving the panel an opportunity to speak individually and we'll allow them to address if there are some specific things that you want to know concerning line items and those kinds of things. So at this time, we'll entertain questions and I'll stand over here out of the way. If you would, come up to the podium and you can begin your Q and A at this time. Y'all don't wanna talk cuz we ain't talking about taxes no more, huh? Alright. Anything? Alright, we gotta take her.
I'm not hearing any discussion about the $20 million theft owed to the water department.
Well, I'm not certain at this point we can determine how much is theft versus how much is not. What we do know is that there's a large amount of what we call straight piping
Right.
that's going on. How much can we attribute that to? We really don't know. The conversation is really about how do we shore up our own internal controls? How do we get out into the community to both educate folks as well as to make sure that people are compliant with our ordinances? So we're working on those things. Public Works Director reported today that a lot of those internal controls that I'm talking about in terms of policy, that we're turning the corner on being able to talk out loud about those. The other issue is about enforcement. I know many of y'all heard that there was a recommendation that we send police officers to people's homes and we gonna arrest them if they stealing water. Well, I'm not sending nobody to, I'm not sending, I want police officers catching folks who hitting old people in the head. I'm not sending police officers to somebody's house because we think they straight piping. We'll send Marshawn Chrisler to their house and let him deal with that. Any other questions? Come on, y'all, I know y'all got something. Thank you.
You mentioned something about eliminating services, certain city services, but if I may, I have a suggestion.
Sure.
We have garbage collection twice a week.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know what it would save or what we could get, but I don't see why we can't have garbage collection just once a week.
Give me a high five. Alright, here's why I gave her a high five. We are entertaining the opportunity to go to a once-a-week garbage collection, but it will actually be the same thing because what we want to encourage you all to start doing is to determine a difference between your garbage and what can be recycled. So what we'll be doing is if we decide to go this route, and I think we're really leaning heavily towards that, is we'll be saying, doing a big public education conversation and saying, "These are the things we want you to throw in the green garbage bin that we will give to you. These are the things that we want you to throw in the black garbage bin that we will give to you." Alright? This is your green, it's recyclable. This is the black, this is your garbage. So in essence, you're still getting the same service, but they only coming to do it once a week. Okay? So you'll have a recycle pickup and you'll have a garbage pickup. It's the same thing, it's just about changing how we think about it. So instead of that Wednesday, Saturday, or that Monday, Thursday, then it'll change where on, how would it, Director Powell, can you give, Director Powell, can you give just an example of how that might look?
The service?
Sure.
We're calling it one plus one.
One plus one.
And so it would be one day of trash pickup and one day of recycle. And what's happening right now is people are confused about what their recycle day is because it's only twice a month and some people don't recycle. But we have a lot of people that come to the fifth floor to get recycled bins, multiple recycle bins. So your recycle bin will be just as big as your trash bin.
Yes.
And you'll be able to recycle more and recycle all.
So you're still getting two garbage days, but one of the days is recyclable garbage and the other days is garbage garbage. Okay? So thank you for the suggestion. I was just glad to hear you say it first. Yes, ma'am. Hey. How are you?
Listen, my question is, I wanna know when are we gonna get our speed bumps on the street? And also, we need our speed reduce on here. We have speeders on here, we have the children in the morning, buses are flying, cars are coming here, even on the street, they're flying down here that lives here.
Yep, thank you. And I wanna thank you for the question. You give me an opportunity to say something out loud. I wanna thank our departments for being the departments that get stuff done that got stopped at some point. Alright? I wanna thank the departments for being the group of people who have gotten things kicked back off, who have gotten things started that may have gotten stalled or may have gotten stopped. That program that you're talking about, ma'am, the speed bumps, the 1. something million dollars, it got stopped. I just, we just had the Mississippi Department of Transportation just approve, go ahead, to go on and start getting that done. Is there an estimated time when folks will start seeing the speed bumps? Who have been approved? Okay. Is there an estimation on that?
We have 20 streets that were working towards construction.
Okay, so there are 20 streets in the first phase that were working on construction, working towards construction on that have been stopped, there have been no movement on it. When I got to Marshall Elementary in 2007, I found in the school 200 names, signatures that had been signed in 2001. Alright? So again, I just wanna say kudos to our team cuz finally in 2015, we'll start seeing that money getting spent. So it won't have to go back, Malcolm, ain't that right? Folks start sending our money back when they say we ain't using it. Any other question? Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Where are we, Mr. Mayor? Well, are there any thoughts of requiring employees, city employees, to live within the city limits of Jackson?
It's already a city ordinance. It passed 2014, late 2014, and so it's already being enforced at this point. It's being enforced for new hires. Yes, sir. Hey, man.
Alright, how you doing?
Good to see you.
Okay, forgive me, I'm nervous.
No worries.
Okay. I wanna renew my business license the other day.
Okay.
I paid $20.
Yes, sir.
Everybody's a back away in Jackson and all the businesses are leaving. The businesses that are left are making a killing. We crying for money. That's one place where we can raise some of these fees and get some of the business money for us. Hey, man.
As a part of a proposal in this budget, raising fees, particularly what you just said.
Attacking money makers in particular.
Yes, sir. 10-4. I got you.
Yes, sir.
I'm just glad you said it first.
Okay, I had a couple other things.
No, 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 come on, I'm ready.
I don't think so, man.
You more nervous to say it than I am to answer.
Well, I heard you talk about the street project.
Yes, sir.
I don't like it. Everything should go to balancing your budget, the drinking water and all this kind of stuff. I don't know what the budget is of the city of Jackson, but everything needs to just stop and come to a halt. And you the only man that can do it. So you gotta be brave, don't please everybody, okay? And do it.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Alright. I'm gonna show out on my end too.
Okay.
Okay. Now, I gave away a house, New South Construction.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Now, I want to give away this other house in the hood. Okay? Did anybody buy a New South ticket? Anybody? Thank you, man. One person, man. I really could show out, man. I really think that giving away these houses is economically beneficial for the city of Jackson. You can hire a lot of local contractors. They can walk to work. We can sell these tickets for $10, okay? And we can give these houses away. Them folks bought a car, okay? Since when I, before they had the house, they were living a hard life, I assume. 18 months later, look at them, they done bought cars and everything. I really want y'all to see what I see, okay? Because this man here, the police chief, if I put cameras, if we give away these houses for $10, hire local people to do it and we put cameras inside these houses, would you ask me to see my camera? Say, "Man, we think he came your way." Okay? And we go to the worst areas with the highest crime. We put cameras, it comes with the house. And then, you know, Mr. Lee Vance, "How do, sir?" Alright? You know, he gonna come and say, "Man, can I look at your tape?" Okay? There's no negative to taking these raggedy houses, fixing them up and giving them away.
Yep. I absolutely agree. And so let me tell you what we're doing.
Come on.
Now, we're not selling tickets, but let me tell you what we're doing. And we are at the end of the road in terms of our submission to HUD. So what we're doing, y'all, is we have already what's called a side lock. So what we're doing, y'all, is we have already what's called a side lot program, and this side lot program gives us the opportunity to be able to, uh, get houses in your hands and lots in your hands that are contiguous, or in other words, right next to your lot. So what we're doing is looking at expanding that. So in other words, uh, what street you live on, sir?
Mobile.
Mobile, you live on Mobile, so you live on Mobile, and there might be three or four city properties that's on Mobile that's around your house. We say, uh, we make the announcement, we tell everybody, we getting ready to take, um, uh, the requests from the folks on Mobile Street. We gonna do this for thirty days, on Mobile Street, and we gonna get a house, uh, we want to give the people on Mobile Street an opportunity to purchase the lot next door to them, uh, through a buyback program, uh, whether that's ten dollars, or whether it's five.
So you going to accept bids or something, or are you setting a price on?
Well, we're, we're not trying to make, we ain't trying to make no money. We're trying to get the house into the hands, or the lot into the hands of people who will take care of it, alright? And pay taxes, alright? The second step is after we've talked to the people on that street, we then move to the people who are in the community, in the surrounding neighborhood, and in Jackson. The caveat is, if you don't live in Jackson, you can't get a lot, alright? The next step is we then go to, uh, the neighborhood associations. Neighborhood associations may want to purchase, um, these lots and use them for whatever the purpose they, they may want to turn them into green space, the church might want to buy it and, and use it for a purpose that is, uh, outlined in whatever we're trying to do, but at the end of the day, the purpose is to get it back on the tax roll. And it is to make sure that we get, uh, these properties in the hands of people who will really take care of them. And finally, so that if you ain't taking care of them, you ain't living in California and I can't find you.
Right, yes sir, I understand, I understand. Um, my only thing, this is right off the top of my head, is that doesn't put any money into people's hands, that's taking money out.
Well, I, so my responsibility is, in this regard, is to, is to fill the coffers of the city through getting these taxes, these, uh, homes back on the tax roll, and to improve the quality of the neighborhood. So, so, while I'm business friendly, I might not always be contractor friendly. That's my man back there, "Hey, how you doing, brother? Good to see you." I'm talking, I'm, you still messing with you. But, but, but I might not always be contractor friendly, but I'm gonna be business friendly. And so the business friendliness says that if the business benefits the community, then the contractor gonna be happy anyway. So your model works.
Yes sir.
Yeah, your model would work.
And everybody's smiling.
Everybody's smiling.
I could use some help from these good people, man.
Well, you solicit their help, I'm sure that they'll be willing.
Uh, you got a lot of people working for you, sir, I could use your help.
Alright, we'll, talk to them afterwards.
Yeah.
Alright. It, come on up if you got a question or, uh, comment, anything else? Yes ma'am? Uh, okay, you can say it from where you are, and I'll repeat the question. Okay, come on.
My question is, I don't know, have y'all noticed the, uh, train there in Clinton? You can go there through all during the day, and you don't hear that whistle blowing. But here in Joyce Town, here and I live on Powell, uh, starting about ten o'clock through twelve, four, two, we hear that whistle blowing all night long, and it wakes you up. And I know he could be a little quieter than that. Not only that, uh, my other question is that.
Mr. Chrisler, can you handle leading that conversation forward?
Because it's, my other question is, I have been cleaning up a property for fifteen years, fifteen years. I mow that grass, I clean the front and the back, and maintain it, so nobody will break in there, you know? Most of them know me, goes, they say I'm the nosy neighbor. But my thing is that, uh, what do you do when you've been cleaning it up?
You should own it, sounds like to me.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like you should own it, sounds like you should be a participant in this side lot program. Sounds like when this is over, you see that young man with the yellow, uh, shirt on, Mr. Von Anderson, you should speak to him, so he can talk to you about how to participate in this side lot program, there's already, there's already, uh, legislation and policy that's written, and you can go on and engage there right now.
Okay, that's a good thing. But I want you to work on that train.
Now, if that train, now, if that train whistle blowing like that in November, get him. Anything else, y'all? Anything else? If not, we need y'all, uh, to leave here singing, um, the song that this budget will be balanced, it will not include a tax increase, that this budget will be responsible, it will not risk the services of Jackson Police Department, of the Jackson Fire Department, that this budget will not sacrifice us losing our zoo. This budget will be one that gives us the opportunity to ensure that we are not bankrupt in the next few years. We need y'all acting like you just heard a rumor. We, we, that's how, we need y'all acting like you just heard a rumor. Alright, you know how we do when we think we heard a rumor? You know, you know how that go, my, my wife and I were in, uh, Mexico last year, and, uh, when we finally got to where we could get to our phones, both of us had twenty-five, thirty messages apiece, and people were texting us, uh, trying to find out, uh, why she and I got into a fight somewhere and she broke the windows out the car. And I said, "Girl, you got magic if you can break a window out a car and we ain't even in town." So, so before we were even back on, in the States good, that rumor had gotten way, way out there. So I want y'all to act like tonight you heard a rumor, and run tell it. Yes sir?
Yes, I, I have a question. Do you own land by the spirit of your faith, by the spirit that you cultivate?
Um, I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
For example, I come in the spirit of light, T-L-I-G-H-T, and then in the spirit of Reverend Austin. I come in the spirit of light, I have, I have a creator, I have a higher need to go with my culture and my faith, so that land that I live on, I can just claim that land by the spirit of my faith.
You absolutely can, and then at some point, it'll be manifested on this side.
Come on, quick. And I was just saying, can you introduce me to the spirit that you playing in under your faith? Yeah or no, I can reclaim that.
Yeah, I absolutely can, see me afterwards, and we'll lead you through the plan. You're in the right place, at the right time, for, for a breakthrough. Tuck somebody and tell them you in the right place. Any other questions, comments? Alright, well, thank y'all, run tell that.
Thanks, man.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand, sir.
Uh, what is Jackson doing to be more business friendly? I, I heard you talk about we're not raising taxes on our revenue, which we can't balance this budget on the back of the revenue, but you were talking about raising fees, how we can, yeah, raise business supply.
Yeah.
Raise the fees, and what about trying to just do something with the Beryl Street project to get that for the city, with their cancer city revenue?
Yeah. Couple of things real quick, and, and then I'll let y'all get out of here to address you. Um, contrary to popular belief, um, we have, um, more businesses opening up in this city than could, we could ever keep pace with that are leaving. Uh, we, we have seen almost sixty or more ribbon cuttings that have happened, and those are the ones that have gone through, uh, the, the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, not only that, but we just, uh, uh, made the announcement about Seraphim, which is a, uh, solar, uh, panel company that's gonna be opening up over on Lawson Street, two hundred and something jobs, uh, fifty billion, fifty million dollar investment that's gonna happen right over there off of May Street. Uh, so we're seeing that happen over and over and over again. We've, um, created a more robust, uh, incentive package that we offer to companies, uh, we've been really aggressive specifically on the Fair Street piece, and today, the Jackson Redevelopment Authority, uh, voted to see, uh, us get the opportunity to see the Fair Street property finally come out of some of the bog down that it's in. So we'll see some funding now that should possibly, that could possibly move us a little step closer to seeing Fair Street be realized. Yes sir. Alright, well, thank y'all, have a great night.